Buenos días, muchas gracias. Muchas gracias a Dios por todas las bendiciones que hay aquí esta mañana. El Comité de Relyados Humanos, Revitalización de la Guaña, Asuntos Regionales, Librerías Públicas, Tecnología Telecomunicativa y Asuntos Federales e Exteriores se ha llamado a orden en las nueve de la tarde. Ahora son nueve de la tarde, el reloj está un poco rápido. Para el registro y en concordancia con el capítulo ocho, subsección ocho, uno cero siete, las notificaciones públicas fueron emitidas el jueves, el 23 de febrero de 2023, adhiriendo al recorte de cinco días y una segunda notificación pública el martes, el 28 de febrero de 2023, cuarenta y ocho horas antes. En adición, este recorte fue notificado en el sitio web del legislativo en www.guamlegislature.com. Y los testimonios que se han presentado pueden ser enviados por correo electrónico a senador Munia Barnes en guamlegislature.org, porque se puede enviar a la oficina de protocolo número 163, Chalant Santo Papa, Guaña. En la agenda, damas y caballeros, tenemos el proyecto número seis dash setenta y siete, C O R, introducido por el senador William Parkinson, senadores Duane Sinicless y yo, senador vicepresidente Tina Rose Munia Barnes, que es un acto para agregar un artículo 26, capítulo doce, título diez, anotado en código Guañino, relativo a la cesión de la prueba de drogas de marihuana. El proyecto número 27 dash C O R es introducido por mí mismo, que es un acto para agregar una subsección M a la sección ocho, cincuenta y uno, artículo cinco, capítulo ocho, título cuatro, anotado en código Guañino, y para amender la sección ocho, cincuenta y tres, C, de artículo cinco, capítulo ocho, título cuatro, anotado en código Guañino, relativo al retiro de oficiales de seguridad pública y de la aplicación de la ley, que son miembros del sistema de retiro definido de beneficio 1.75. El proyecto número treinta y siete dash setenta y siete, C O R, es introducido por el senador William A. Parkinson, senador Roy A. B. Canata, vicepresidente Tina Rose Munia Barnes, senador Joe S. Augustine, senador Frank Blas Jr., senador Christopher M. Duñez, presidente Tereza M. Turlahi, senador Sabina Flores Perez, senador Telo Tidegui, senador Duane Sinicless, senador Chris Barnett, senador Jesse Lohan y senador Joanne Brown, que es un acto para nombrar la Ley de Derecho Público 36 dash 130, la Senadora Jose Pito Turlahi Retirement Act, relativo a expresar el apoyo de la H R 256, introducida en la Casa de Representantes de Estados Unidos, que busca extender la cobertura del ingreso de seguridad suplementario, que es el programa SSI, a individuos cualificados que residan en Puerto Rico, las Islas Virgin de Estados Unidos, Guañino y Samoa. Y luego tenemos la resolución 30 dash 37, C O R, introducida por mí mismo, senador S. Augustine, senador Blas, senador secretario Shelton, presidente Turlahi, senador Canata, senador Parkinson, senador Tidegui, senador Joanne Brown y senador Lohan, que es relativo a apoyar la participación de China Taiwán como observador en la Organización Mundial de Salud, la Asamblea Mundial de Salud, y para reafirmar el apoyo para la participación de China Taiwán como observador en las organizaciones internacionales. Damas y caballeros, aquí me están acompañando esta mañana es el senador Tom Fisher, senador Joanne Brown y senador Tidegui. Buenos días, colegas. También me están acompañando es el senador Will Parkinson. Me arrepiento, damas y caballeros, si no reconocí la familia de un querido colega mío, un viejo colega mío, la familia Turlahi, senador Jose Pito Turlahi, que está en la audiencia, nos acompaña hoy para uno de los temas de acción en la agenda. Manana Sizouis, bienvenidos, gracias por acompañarnos. Antes de proceder a la discusión, damas y caballeros, me gustaría proporcionar algunos reglas generales de conducta para todos los que están en la audiencia. La conducta de este recorte será la siguiente: Uno, los testigos serán reconocidos en el orden de la registración y en la hoja de inscripción, el testimonio escrito debe ser leído y enviado al comité. Por favor, provee a nuestro personal legislativo su testimonio escrito. Para fotocopia, se podrá presentar solo una vez. Los testimonios de largo giro deben ser resumidos a cinco minutos. Una vez que hayan terminado, por favor, permanezcan en el cuarto para cualquier pregunta que me ayuden. Las preguntas y los testimonios deberán estar confinados con la sustancia o naturaleza de la agenda. El personal infringe el carácter o el motivo de cualquier senador o de cualquier individuo testigo es no permitido. Cualquier violación de esta regla general de conducta resultará en la remoción del asunto. Cuando hable, por favor, asegúrese de que el micrófono esté encendido y que hable en el micrófono. Por favor, indique su nombre para el registro, de dónde eres, y si apoyas o no apoyas los proyectos o la resolución. De nuevo, notaré el registro que hay cinco temas en la agenda, así que en el interés del tiempo, lo pido con cariño que cada colega haga una pregunta por panel, y si se necesita, hará una segunda ronda de preguntas al panel. Aquellos que no siguen las reglas de compromiso serán removidos del asunto público. También me están acompañando, damas y caballeros, mi buen colega, el presidente de la OFB, es el senador Joe S. Augustine. Manana Sizouis, senador.
Madam presidenta.
Sí. Damas y caballeros, voy a cambiar un poco la agenda. En la audiencia tenemos a un representante del Office Económico y Cultural de Taiwán aquí, y vamos a escuchar la resolución número treinta dash setenta y siete, C O R. Lo pondremos en la parte superior de la agenda en respeto al protocolo en este momento. Y me gustaría agradecer a mis colegas que me otorgaron la oportunidad de ayudar a cambiar esta agenda. Esta resolución, damas y caballeros, es treinta dash setenta y siete, C O R. De nuevo, es relativo a apoyar la participación de China Taiwán como observador en la Organización Mundial de Salud, la Asamblea Mundial de Salud, y para reafirmar el apoyo para la participación de China Taiwán como observador en las organizaciones internacionales. Y antes de hacer mis comentarios de abertura, voy a invitar al vicepresidente Vincent Lu al table para sus comentarios. Por favor, tengan un asiento en el table, y luego proporcionar mis comentarios de abertura, y luego darle a ustedes. Por favor, tengan un asiento. Damas y caballeros, este año introdujimos esta resolución para reafirmar el apoyo de la República de China Taiwán a participar significativamente en reuniones de interesados internacionales. Cientos de países, parlamentarios y legisladores en Estados Unidos y en todo el mundo continúan de estar detrás de Taiwán para participar en la Asamblea Mundial de Salud, hosta por la Organización Mundial de Salud. Es lamentable que Taiwán aún no fue invitada. Además, como competidores globales con industrias altamente desarrolladas, su visión en reuniones internacionales como la Organización Civil de Avión Internacional, la Conversión del Framework de Naciones Unidas sobre el Cambio Climático, y la Organización Penal Internacional sería invaluable. En la compromiso de Guañino con nuestra relación de hermana y ciudad en cincuenta años con Taipei, y ahora nuestra nueva relación de hermana y ciudad con Taowán y Taiyong, esperamos continuar apoyando la participación de la República de China en las reuniones de interesados internacionales. Así que ese es mi testimonio de abertura. Y de nuevo, en este momento reconozco al vicepresidente Lu para compartir su testimonio hoy. Buenos días, señor.
Buenos días, a todos. Sí, es un placer y me siento muy honrado de estar aquí, sí, en el asunto público. Sí, para estar aquí en la Guañina Legislativa, a cargo del Director General de la Chain de Economía y Cultura del Gobierno de la República de China Taiwán. Me gustaría expresar mi mayor aprecio a todos ustedes, sí, a los miembros de la Guañina Legislativa y al pueblo del Gobierno de Guañino, por su apoyo a largo plazo en términos de la participación de Taiwán en la Organización Mundial de Salud. Desde lo que sé, Taiwán ha sido excluido, sí, del mundo, W H O, durante varias décadas. Pero en realidad Taiwán puede contribuir en la prevención de la pandemia, así como la asistencia médica a la comunidad internacional. Taiwán puede ayudar, y Taiwán está ayudando, y creo que la inclusión de Taiwán en la ONU puede contribuir a la comunidad internacional, definitivamente. Y una vez más, muchas gracias. Muchas gracias, presidente, y nuestros amigos, todos los senadores presentes aquí en el asunto público. Muchas gracias. Y creo que en el futuro, las relaciones amigables y la cooperación bilateral en los intercambios continuarán siendo fortaleciendo en el futuro. Una vez más, gracias.
Gracias. Están muy bienvenidos, vicepresidente Lu. En este momento abriré para mis colegas cualquier comentario o pregunta en referencia a esta resolución. Senador Joe S. Augustine, te reconozco en este momento.
Gracias, madam presidenta. Me gustaría agradecerle, madam presidenta, por aprobar la resolución. Estoy en total apoyo a esto. Mi padre fue senador y presidente durante la legislatura durante veinte años, y siempre ha estado en total apoyo de Taiwán. Gracias, madam presidenta.
Están bienvenidos. Me alegro de escuchar esto. Son fans de Taiwán.
Están muy bienvenidos, senador S. Augustine. Senador Will Parkinson, te reconozco en este momento.
Buenos días, señor. No tengo mucho que decir. Recuerdo ir a Taiwán cuando era un niño, y siempre he sido un gran fan y seguidor de Taiwán, y espero apoyarte en esta resolución.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias, senador Parkinson. Senador Tom Fisher, buenos días, usted es reconocido.
Buenos días, madam presidenta. Muchas gracias. Y gracias, señor, por estar aquí. Soy orgulloso de considerarme un amigo de Taiwán, y sé que Taiwán es un gran amigo de Guañino, y la relación entre nosotros es querida. Taiwán es un refugio de democracia en el Pacífico Occidental. Compartimos los mismos valores, y compartimos los mismos, bueno, compartimos los mismos valores y una tradición de participación democrática en el gobierno, y así lo agradezco a Taiwán por eso. Y de nuevo, soy orgulloso de ser un amigo de Taiwán. La única reservación que tengo, señora, es porque se trata de asuntos de asuntos extranjeros, si o no Estados Unidos está de acuerdo con esto, y no sé si lo saben, pero...
Sí, lo sé, definitivamente, y Estados Unidos ha sido un aliado muy grande y un socio de Taiwán durante las últimas seis, siete décadas.
Y Estados Unidos apoya el estatus observador en estas organizaciones.
De nuevo, como parte del apoyo y los esfuerzos que hemos estado trabajando desde 1974, hemos sido realmente grandes defensores y seguidores, y también Uncle Sam en esos esfuerzos. Así que gracias, senador Fisher.
Así que gracias, y basado en esa representación, yo también apoyo la resolución.
Gracias. Buenos días, senador Joanne, usted es reconocido en este momento.
Tengo a Telo Gophers, ella estaba aquí antes.
Senador Tidegui, en el fondo, buenos días.
Buenos días, madam presidenta, y gracias por la oportunidad de ser parte de algo como este. Es muy importante, creo que Taiwán once dejó Guañino durante un tiempo, la oficina de directores generales, y decidió volver a Guañino, y volvió a Guañino con toda su fuerza. No solo estabas contribuyendo a la comunidad en cuanto a, ya sabes, las patrocinias, sino que estabas allí para la información y programas de outreach, lo cual fue muy bueno. Y este office en los últimos años ha mostrado una gran presencia aquí en la isla y las contribuciones que hiciste a esta isla. En cambio, continúo trabajando con Taiwán también, con tu tecnología. Taiwán es uno de los antojos en el desperdicio de energía, reciclando, reutilizando, y mucha de esa información es traída a Guañino, y vamos a Taiwán a buscarla. Así que somos una isla pequeña, y no habrá mucho área restante para nuestra embalada que tendremos que encontrar una manera de lidiar con nuestra desechos. Así que Taiwán ha sido un gran defensor para ayudarnos en eso, y continúo trabajando con Taiwán. Y en cambio, cualquier cosa que podamos hacer para apoyarte también, estoy aquí para apoyarlo. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias. Sí, creo que podemos fortalecer más, sí, la cooperación, los intercambios entre Taiwán y Guañino en nuestra dirección general, la Chain, consideramos muy importantes los esfuerzos, sí, respecto a la, para fortalecer las relaciones bilaterales entre Taiwán y Guañino desde que nuestro oficio se cerró hace dos y medio, dos y medio años atrás. Y ahora estamos haciendo esto, continuaremos haciendo esfuerzos para cooperar con ustedes, con las Guañina Legislativas, y vamos a hacer esto, sí, porque su sugestión es muy constructiva y es muy buena propuesta. Hablaría de ello con nuestro director general Chen, y tal vez él se reunirá con ustedes en el futuro, y esta es una buena idea. Muchas gracias.
Gracias, vicepresidente. Senador Brown.
Muchas gracias, madam presidenta, y también estoy co-sponsorizando esto con ustedes, apoyando la resolución. Taiwán definitivamente, y la región tiene muy buen amigo y buen socio del Pacífico Occidental, y creo que eso es algo que todos necesitamos valorar, considerando la situación mundial y lo que estamos lidiando con nuestros vecinos que no son tan amigables y no son tan progresistas y son más agresivos en su enfoque. Y así ciertamente la tecnología, el apoyo, ciertamente en Guañino, como el senador Telo mencionó, el retorno de tener tu oficina de nuevo aquí en tu presencia, el compromiso y las contribuciones directas que Taiwán ha hecho a nuestra comunidad. Ciertamente durante la pandemia, Taiwán ha tomado muy buen lead en cómo abordar los problemas de seguridad y salud. Y siempre, como país, siempre ha extendido su apoyo a otros en el mundo, y creo que eso dice mucho. No es solo lo que necesitas hacer internamente dentro de tu país para crecer y desarrollarse, sino cómo extiendes y expandes ese ayuda en el mundo, y también particularmente en la región del Pacífico Occidental, donde somos todos vecinos. Así que seguimos apoyando tus esfuerzos y gracias por tu asociación y continua presencia. Tenemos mayores desafíos en el mundo allá. Tenemos mucho que ganar en mantenernos unidos y trabajar juntos para apoyar lo que valoramos en nuestra calidad de vida y nuestras libertades. Así que esperamos una continua asociación con Taiwán, y mientras reconocemos ciertamente las situaciones internacionales y nacionales, por supuesto, con Estados Unidos, lo bueno es que hemos continuado esa asociación y queremos continuar trabajando con ustedes. Así que con eso, madam presidenta, muchas gracias, y gracias por su testimonio esta mañana.
Están muy bienvenidos, senador Brown. Y si no hay nadie más en la audiencia para presentar testimonio oral, concluiré que la resolución número treinta dash setenta y siete, C O R, es públicamente escuchada. Muchas gracias. Gracias, vicepresidente Lu.
Gracias, presidente.
Damas y caballeros, agregando a ese cambio, voy a sacar la resolución 21 dash 37, C O R, a la frente, que es, que es relativo a expresar el apoyo de la H R 256, introducida en la Casa de Representantes de Estados Unidos, que busca extender la cobertura del ingreso de seguridad suplementario, el programa SSI, a individuos cualificados que residan en Puerto Rico, las Islas Virgin de Estados Unidos, Guañino y Samoa. Y en este momento invito al abogado Rodney Jacob, y a todos los demás, él es el único que tengo en la lista. Si hay alguien más que quiera hablar sobre la resolución sobre SSI, por favor, no hesite en hacerlo y venir. Haré mi declaración de patrocinio y luego daré el voto al abogado Jacob. Así que, damas y caballeros, y colegas, he introducido la resolución 21 dash 37, para expresar el apoyo de Guañino a cargo del pueblo de Guañino para la H R 256, que extendría el ingreso de seguridad suplementaria a los territorios. SSI proporciona apoyo crítico para los vulnerables en nuestra comunidad, asegurándonos que tienen los recursos que necesitan para obtener el cuidado que necesitan. Como presidenta del Comité de Asuntos Federales e Exteriores, he tenido algunas reuniones con nuestro delegado congresista Moiland, y estoy agradecido de que haya comprometido a seguir advocatingo por este importante asunto para lograr paridad para nuestros residentes. Desafortunadamente, el delegado tuvo algunos cambios en su agenda, ya que la Cámara está actualmente en sesión y no podrá unirse hoy. Puedo hablar sobre la injusticia que no extender SSI a los territorios significa, pero creo que sería mejor escuchar a aquellos afectados más directamente. Tenemos, nosotros, tenemos hoy a nuestros colegas y damas y caballeros, el abogado Rodney Jacob, quien representaba a las twinas escalar, quienes ya no están con nosotros hoy, pero pelearon este combate hasta la Corte Suprema. También, aunque no esté físicamente con nosotros aquí, como está actualmente desplegado, mis colegas, tienen una copia del testimonio de Diamandi. Mr. Diamandi ha pasado más de veinte años sirviendo en nuestro país y tomó la decisión de volver a Guañino para criar a su hija. Desafortunadamente, cuando se mudó a casa para que su hijo pudiera estar con la familia, el apoyo crítico que su hija necesitaba se detuvo. Como comprometí con el abogado Jacob el último mandato y Mr. Diamandi, cuando escuché su historia, esto es algo que sé de primera mano necesita ser rectificado, y reitero mi sincera gracias a nuestro congresista Moiland, quien ha comprometido a mantener este combate conmigo. Y con eso dicho, ahora me gustaría comenzar el segmento del recorte y aceptar testimonio y invitar a cualquiera más que está en la audiencia aquí, si lo quieren. Por favor, no hesite en ver a nuestro personal en la puerta de entrada y, para apoyar la medida, pero en este momento, el abogado Rodney Jacob, Manana Sizouis, pueden proceder.
Gracias y buenos días, vicepresidente Munia Barnes, y todos nuestros senadores y aquellos que están viendo este recorte. Muchas gracias por invitarme a dar testimonio hoy. Esto es realmente, realmente importante para nosotros en Guañino, y personalmente he estado allí durante quince a dieciséis años. He estado antes en este organismo para contar la historia, que contaré un poco más sobre, de nuevo, pero quiero decirles sobre el capítulo que se ha desplegado desde que he estado aquí últimamente. En particular, quiero dar un ejemplo concreto sobre por qué SSI importa aquí en casa. Como indicó el vicepresidente, fui uno de los abogados que presentó en la Corte del Distrito de Guañino para rectificar esta grave injusticia a la vieja Katrina Schaller y su hermana twin, Leslie. Ese caso estaba en la Corte del Distrito de Pensilvania. Son las hermanas y hermanos de Kim Fegerger y Dr. John Fegerger. Y Kim y Dr. John eran sus guardianes. Solo tengo que decir, estoy agradecido a ustedes y a este organismo por continuar contando la historia. Es tan importante. SSI es un programa que proporciona asistencia financiera a los ancianos de baja raza, deshabilitados y blindados estadounidenses. Supporta a millones de estadounidenses cualificados a través de los cincuenta estados, la Cámara de Colombia y el C N M I. Este legislativo descubrió que si Congresso extendiera los beneficios SSI a nosotros, algunos 24,000 de nuestros residentes serían elegibles para los beneficios. Katrina y su hermana twin, Leslie, nacieron en Pensilvania en 1970. Durante sus vidas, ambos tuvieron distrofia miotónica, que es una debilitación y incurable genética que causa degeneración a largo plazo de la función muscular. Durante la mayor parte de su vida, y su vida, Katrina vivió con mamá en Pensilvania. Y cuando mamá murió en octubre de 2007, Katrina no tenía otros familiares vivos, ninguno, que pudieran cuidarla, excepto por su hermana Kim y su hermano, Dr. Fegerger, que viven en Sinehanya. No había nadie más. Y ustedes todos, y probablemente todos lo conozcan, no solo viven en Sinehanya, pero Dr. Fegerger nació aquí, fue criado aquí, fue a la F D, fue a la U O G. Tiene cinco hermanos y hermanas, y es parte de una familia muy grande, profunda de origen aquí, y es un gran doctor. Fue el producto de muchos programas de residencia de alto perfil y podría haber tenido la elección de cualquier carrera médica en el mainland o en Hawaii, pero eligió casa, y él y Kim criaron a sus tres hermosos hijos aquí, que ahora están en universidad y escuela de graduados. Pero esa elección de regresar a casa por Dr. Fegerger significaría que muchos años después, su familia tendría que tomar una elección angustiante debido a la discriminación de aplicación de SSI a Guañino. Cuando le dijeron al oficial de Seguridad Social de Pensilvania que Katrina tenía que relocar a Guañino por su cuidado, el oficial le dijo que la Administración de Seguridad Social acabaría con los beneficios de Katrina, y si se mudara, terminaría porque Guañino no es elegible. De hecho, en la ley, Guañino no es parte de los Estados Unidos. Solo para que esté claro sobre eso. En nuestras leyes nacionales, Guañino no es parte de los Estados Unidos para SSI. Así que llegó a vivir con los Fegergers, perdió sus beneficios en 2009, y lo que es aún más heartbreakoso es la historia de su hermana twin, Leslie, que tenía la misma condición debilitante. Y hasta su muerte en 2021, todo lo que querían era verse de nuevo. Pero con SSI, no puedes viajar fuera de los Estados Unidos por más de treinta días, y Leslie no podía viajar con su condición por más de treinta días, a esta distancia, y habría perdido sus beneficios porque Guañino está fuera de los Estados Unidos por propósitos de esta ley. Y ella era físicamente incapaz de hacer ese viaje, pero todo lo que querían era una reunión. Y desafortunadamente, su sueño nunca llegó a ser real, como Leslie falleció en septiembre y Katrina falleció ocho semanas después, creo, de enfermedad cardíaca debido a la pérdida de su hermana twin. Están juntos en el cielo, pero nunca pudieron reunirse aquí en Guañino. Así que digo repetidamente, y sé que comparten esto, pero ¿la situación es injusta? Bueno, por supuesto que sí. ¿Es malo? Sin duda. ¿Y es discriminante? Absolutamente. Pero el punto que quería traer a este organismo de nuevo, y sé el punto que este organismo está amplificando a través del Congreso, es que no es hipotético para nosotros, es real, es concreto, importa. Y cuando el juez jefe Tidingo Gatewood encontró que la aplicación de SSI a Katrina violaba la cláusula de protección igualdad de los derechos de la Constitución de Estados Unidos, realmente, realmente nos emocionamos porque finalmente obtuvimos justicia. Pero como la resolución notes, eso fue rápidamente borrado. El juez Gatewood encontró que era discriminante porque nuestros hermanos y hermanas en el C N M I lo entienden, y somos solo a sesenta millas de Rota. Y dijo que eso no pasó el examen de base racional, que es el examen constitucional para probar este tipo de asuntos. Pero reconoció la injusticia. Estados Unidos nos peleó a todos los pasos de la way. Mi co-counselor era un gran empresa de derecho en Washington, D.C. Lo hicimos de forma gratuita, pero imaginen el tipo de combate que llevó a tomar en los Estados Unidos en este asunto. Lo que pasó desde entonces es que la Corte Suprema se enfrentó con los Estados Unidos en el mismo asunto en Puerto Rico, y muy pronto después, cuando Katrina y Leslie pasaron el Número Cuatro, en lugar de llegar a la decisión, ordenó que el juicio de Gatewood se vacase, como si nunca existiera. Nos peleamos también. Le pedimos a la Corte decidir el caso porque era de tanta importancia pública, pero eligieron vaciarlo. Sí, estoy enojado con eso, probablemente puedan verlo. Quiero decir, seguro que lo estoy. Pero en lugar de ponerse enojado, lo importante es seguir luchando, y por lo tanto, solo para terminar esto... And therefore, just to cap this off, I am really grateful because you all haven't given up, and people in Congress haven't given up. And we just have to keep advocating and fighting, even if we take it on the chin once in a while, because it's that important. So I want to just close with one other thought. It comes at this issue a different way. Clearly, I believe this is uncon- an unconstitutional application as to us Americans on Guam. It's just not right. And I'm going to keep fighting. But at a time where we're in unprecedented buildup for the United States military, and they are asking us to support our bases, our country's bases on Guam, how do we support in the most effective, efficient way when the very safety net programs that are designed to get people in the workforce aren't applicable to us? So I say as an additional reason, at this time in our history, we need to let our country know that as they rely on our community to support our national defense, we need these critical programs so that families that have a disabled member in their home have the resources for care so they can go out into the workforce and support our greater effort. So with that, thank you so much. Thank you for hearing this early. I had an appointment at 11:00 that I couldn't break, so I very much appreciate being out of order. And, and Vice Speaker, my condolences again to you and your family and to Senator Terlahi's family. Thank you.
Sizouz Masi, Attorney Jacobs, thank you for your continued efforts in supporting this, this resolution and the fight that you will continue to do to support our island of Guam. You've done it from the heart so many, so many years, and you don't want to stop. So from me to you, undankulu, undankulu na Sizouz Masi. I will yield colleagues to Senator Joseph Augustine for any comments or question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you again for the resolution, and thank you, Attorney Jacob, for what you've done. And you're right. Guam is being the host, major buildup. The United States government has to turn around and just allow the SSI. You know, it's exactly what you said. And even the statement, the testimony of Mr. David, there are many folks in the mainland don't pay for it anyway, and they got it. There's no reason why we should be, continue to be treated as second-class citizen, U.S. citizen. They need to just recognize that and move on because they want, they want to continue us to be a good host? Well, then continue to do your part, the United States government. And with that, thank you again, Attorney Jacob. We will support you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome, Senator Sinagstein. Senator Parkinson?
Thank you for your testimony and your work, sir. I greatly appreciate it. I categorically reject the premise that Guam is not part of the United States, and as such, the United States should make good on their obligations to the people. So thank you for your work, and I'd be looking forward to supporting this resolution.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Parkinson. Senator Fisher, if you're recognized.
Thank you. Good morning, Attorney Jacobs. If Congress allows Guam to participate in the program, in order to participate in the program, would residents of Guam have to make retroactive contributions?
To the...
In order to participate, because many years have gone by without participation by us.
If I, if I get what your question is, which is really important, is how does, does, do, do SSI recipients, or let's say their states, do they have to pay into anything to participate in the program such that we might have to have, there may be a retroactive kind of invoice to us? The answer is no. This is a national safety net program. It's a program that benefits everybody from coast to coast, and there's not a, there's not a entrance fee, if you will.
Regardless of whether you've paid in at any point in your life?
With, also, this is important. This is a program run through the Social Security Administration, but it's not like Social Security Disability Insurance. You don't qualify because you've paid for Social Security. It's not the, the kind of penality of benefits through what we pay every payroll as a tax. This is just run through that agency to implement a national welfare program.
Okay. You, this is FT, Francis Tidinko Gatewood's decision was based on equal protection?
Correct.
What was the nature of the discrimination? You mentioned that it's a rational basis review, and my other, last question, ma'am, is has geographic differences ever been found to be a suspect classification?
It's not under, well, I'd have to go back and look at our case law, but the geographical segmentation of all of this was not the basis of the decision. In other words, it wasn't a suspect class based on a category of where you lived. It was the justification of, of the three primary grounds in which the United States has historically argued, which was basically taxes. Taxes we don't pay into the National Treasury. It would be disruptive of Guam's economy if SSI was applied here. And I'm sorry, right now, it escapes me, the third prong, but Judge Gatewood and the First Circuit actually disposed of those issues. The easiest rationale to see, both in the First Circuit and out of Judge Gatewood, was that there's just no way additional funding through SSI would have a disruptive quality on the economy of Guam. And, and taxes, there are many, many states that pay in less to the National Treasury than what they get out. So the point was is this was designed to assist the most vulnerable, poorest members of our community, who by nature don't pay taxes. And there were many, there were, there were, I shouldn't say many, there were about six or seven states that paid less into the National Treasury than the benefits that they got out. So that tax argument didn't really fly with the First Circuit or with Judge Gatewood.
All right. Thank you, sir, and thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. Senator Tidigui?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Attorney Jacob, I, you know, give you my undankulu Sizouz Masi for fighting for the people of Guam. If I'm not mistaken, the Empire Justice, if that number is correct, 24,000 individuals on Guam will be affected by this. Is that still the correct number?
I've not seen anything different.
Okay. Yeah, that information could expand, I'm not sure, but 24,000 people on this island would be affected if the U.S. continued to treat their states like all the U.S. territories, you know, in the same manner. I remember this article that happened several years ago, the fight with the gentleman from Puerto Rico, moving from New York, going down to Puerto Rico, and that began a, a big push. Attorney Jacob, are you aware of any efforts made by the, our Congress, our delegate in an effort to push SSI? Have you approached the former Delegate San Nicholas at all, or even prior to that, as you were fighting this issue?
Former Delegate San Nicholas or current Congressman Moyland?
Well, this has been going on for two years, and he was in office at the time.
Yes. Congressman San Nicholas did push this issue, and it actually had some traction. President Biden supported it, you know, one of the, and it ended up in our domestic budget to support SSI to the applications for the territories. We were very excited about that and very encouraged, but it didn't actually get in. The, the exact, and Senator, I'm happy to, to lay this out with a little more time, but my understanding is, is that big initial budget bill didn't happen because of the, the compromise issues going on in the Congress, I think with then Senator Manchin. But it made it as far as we've ever made it to recognize out of the White House that this should be funded and supported it. Ironically, the Department of Justice took the position that the United States, that the U.S., that the Congress was just fine doing what it, what it wanted to do in the discriminatory application of this issue as to us because of the territorial clause in the Constitution, which applies to us. But I can say this, and I'm very grateful to, you know, our, our current Congressman Moyland now, he has made this his primary, one of his primary issues, and he's already been on the floor advocating for the application of SSI to Guam, really in the name, with the consent of, of John and Kim Feggerer, in the name of Leslie and Katrina, to, to really make it real to Congress that, you know, this is important to us and it matters. It's applied in their home states. It's applied in my home state of Arizona, right? But not here when we moved. And so, anyway, I, he is, he is being quite aggressive about it, and, and I'm thankful that we're supporting those efforts. A House Bill two fifty-six is coming out of the delegate of Puerto Rico that our delegate is supporting, but I understand he's also trying to make other efforts to, to get us here on Guam. And I have met with him.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tidigui.
When I was actually at the Governor's Office as a special assistant, we were trying to bring, you know, the U.S. territories together, you know, to bring them as a unified approach, because in, as an individual, you know, there is really no power. But as a group of U.S. territories, which make up a huge population amount and strategically located, is very viable to the United States. So I hope you continue, Mr. Jacob, Attorney Jacob, to fight this cause, you know, because so many families on here would be affected, and so many families will come back to the island because of this. That's most important of all. And don't give up the fight. And may I suggest that when you work with our Congressman, that you ask him to bring a more unified approach by all the territories coming together as one solid group to fight this issue. Thank you, Mr. Jacob.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tidigui. Senator Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and certainly to Attorney Jacobs. We were following your story with regards to these two sisters, and it just really brings to light the human aspect with regards to U.S. policy and how in many other areas, we're part of the American family, and then you see situations like this where there's such inequity. And it's simply you're, you're a U.S. citizen as long as you're, you're within the continental United States, Hawaii and Alaska, and then once you step out to the so-called territories, you get stripped of these benefits. And something that is so essential to these two sisters that they physically couldn't even see each other, that their, their physical illnesses limited them from being able to do that, and that's very heartbreaking. But, you know, you brought to light a lot of, a lot of their story to us and others to be aware about the human aspect and what, what the ultimate toll is because of these inequities. And we certainly want to keep fighting with you. We certainly don't want to see the continued disadvantage to our people because they're no different. I mean, if we're U.S. citizens, we're U.S. citizens. We can't be different versions of U.S. citizens. And I think we just need to remind the United States with regards to their own policies where they're inequitable to their own people, and I think there's a lot to gain by it. I couldn't imagine not being able to be here because I had an illness, and we've lost a lot of our people who've had to leave Guam. Not just, you know, we say, oh, we need better, you know, job opportunities and things. Some have left because of health-related issues that if they didn't have available back in the mainland and some of the facilities, they would not be able to sustain themselves. And they've had to leave and sometimes take some of their family with them. And I couldn't imagine that. I would hate to ever be told, you can't come back home to Guam, or you would not be able to spend your final, your later days in your life here because I had an illness that would prevent me from coming back. And we take for granted our mobility and our ability to, to get up and do the things we do, and we're not aware of it until we have to experience it or someone close to us experiences those limitations. So thank you very much for your advocacy and what you continue to do to bring their story to light, because it really, it hits home. It hits home, and even if we're not personally affected by it, others are in our community. And we just want dignity at the end of the day. I think that's what it comes down to. It's just dignity, that to be respected regardless of what our physical health and circumstances. So thank you for your, as I mentioned, your continued advocacy, and I hope this resolution will continue to bring these issues to light. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. Thank you very much, Attorney Jacobs. I will note for the record, ladies and gentlemen, that there has been written testimony as provided by Mr. David Diomandi, and I will, it will be submitted and appended to the committee report, and again, based on what was noted earlier, he supports the measure. So again, thank you, Attorney Jacobs, for your time and your continued effort in fighting for our people of Guam. With that being said, I will call Resolution Number twenty-one dash thirty-seven, COR, publicly heard. And again, if anybody wishes to present testimony, they can do so by sending it to Senator Munia Barnes at GuamLegislature.org or to the Protocol Office here of the Guam Legislature. Signamasi.
Thank you.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll move on to next, on the agenda, which is Number six dash thirty-seven, COR, which is an act to add a new Article twenty-six, Chapter twelve of Title X, Guam Code annotated, relative to ending marijuana drug testing. There are several people up to testify. I'll call them up right now and then ask the author of the legislation to provide his opening statement. I do know that we have Ms. Catherine Gill from the, from the Employers Council. We have Monica Marquez and Vincent Herrera, who want to add to that. There's anybody else who wishes to speak, please sign in at the front entrance. Senator Parkinson, I will yield to you to start with your opening statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This bill was drafted from all legislation from the Public Leadership Institute, a nonprofit, nonpartisan policy center based in Washington, D.C., organized to raise public awareness on key issues of equity and justice. Under this legislation, no employer, landlord, college, or government agency shall require any person to participate in a blood, breath, or urine test for the detection of marijuana as a condition for employment, housing, college, or government benefits. Guam had 124,110 working-age residents in September 2021, and more than half were not employed. A total of 50,410 working-age civilian Guam residents said that they did not want a job when surveyed by the governor of Guam in September 2021, out of 54,190 residents who were not in the labor force at the time. At the same time, you see help wanted signs everywhere you go on the island. Employees all over the island are looking for employees and coming up short, despite the vast number of people who are unemployed. As Senator, I want to focus on eliminating barriers to employment. What we should be striving for in our island is for people to get jobs with as few roadblocks as possible. Recreational cannabis has been legal on Guam for four years, and because of this, I think potential employees should not have to be drug-tested for marijuana. Cannabis is legal on our island. We aren't drug-testing people for nicotine or alcohol, so why are we still drug-testing them for marijuana? It's time to update these practices. I do recognize there should be some exceptions, including that the prohibitions against testing shall not stop law enforcement authorities from such testing as part of an investigation and possible intoxication while operating a vehicle, and it shall also not prohibit an employer, college, landlord, from taking action based on a person's behavior rather than test results. This bill was written broadly so that may be amended based on public testimony. I appreciate those who have already made the time to meet with me in my office to discuss their concerns. What this law is meant to do is to remove barriers to employment for responsible cannabis users and ensure that our people can get to work and be productive members of society. I yield my time.
Sizouz Masi, Senator Parkinson, at this time, I will open the floor for panel m- members here. Ms. Catherine Gale, please.
There we go. Great. Thank you for that. Hafedeh Ammanasidus, Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, Senator Sinagastin, Senator Parkinson, Senator Fisher, and Senator Brown, thank you so much for providing us this opportunity to come and speak today on Bill 6-37. My name is Catherine Denite Gale, and I am the Executive Director of the Employers Council. The Employers Council is a not-for-profit organization that was founded on Guam in 1966 to assist companies to be great employers by ensuring regulatory compliance and engaging in employment practices. We currently have 70 members that represent nearly 100 companies on Guam and employ thousands of island residents. I'm here to speak out against Bill 6-37 on behalf of the Employers Council and its members. Ask just about any employer, and they will tell you that they would rather not have to conduct any drug testing at all. Why? Because it is costly, very costly for some employers, and administratively time-consuming and complicated. But even though employers would rather not do drug testing, many do. Why? The number-one reason is because of safety. Number two, because of funding. And number three, because of liability. The number-one reason why companies test for drugs is safety. Safety of customers, safety of employees, and safety of business operations. The relationship between drug testing and safety has been shown by numerous studies. A study by the Cornell University School of Industrial Labor and Relations showed that, on average, companies in the study sample that tested workers and job applicants for drugs experienced a 51% reduction in injury rates within two years of implementing a drug testing program. Drug testing and increased safety go hand in hand. Companies that directly look after or offer services to customers, such as those in the medical, childcare, education, and hospitality industries, or those involved with heavy machinery, such as those in the construction, manufacturing, and transportation industries, and ones that look after people's life savings, such as those in the financial and investment industries, rely on drug testing as one means to help ensure the safety of all with whom they are involved. In terms of funding, regardless whether cannabis use has been legalized by our local government here on Guam, its use is still considered illegal by the U.S. federal government. As such, under the Drug-Free Workplace Act, any organization receiving a federal contract of $100,000 or more, or any grant at all, must have a drug-free workplace policy in place. While Bill 6-37, as it is currently written, provides an exception for federal law in relation to drug testing, the fact is managing when exceptions are allowed and when they are not will be extremely burdensome and costly for many of our island employers. There may be occasions when a company has a federal grant and when it doesn't have a federal grant, or when part of the business has a federal contract and part of the business doesn't have a federal contract. Yet that business needs to be ready to be able to apply and get funding whenever it can. This bill hampers our island's businesses' flexibility to jump on a federal funding opportunity whenever available. The final key reason employers test for drugs is liability, and more specifically, insurance coverage. A large number of insurance policies that companies are required to carry to operate their businesses have a drug testing or drug policy requirement, and if not, will charge a much higher premium if there is limited or no testing. By controlling a company's choice to drug test, this bill may put hundreds of companies' insurance policies at risk, in turn putting the company's basic ability to operate at risk. Before moving any further with this bill, we ask that it is absolutely necessary that more research be done to fully understand the complete and possible ramifications of this bill on the ability of our island's businesses to continue to operate successfully. Lastly, we ask lawmakers to consider if this bill is needed at all. Fortunately, Guam enjoys a free-market economy. While the legalization of cannabis, combined with the limitations of current cannabis testing technology, has affected some companies' hiring pools, employers who can do so because they are not restricted due to safety, funding, or liability concerns are working already on how to best adjust their drug testing and hiring policies to take, to understand the legalized drug use into account and expand their hiring pools. This great market dynamic of supply and demand is in play at this very moment and working as it should, negating the need for government time and resources to be spent on a costly and burdensome intervention that may have many unforeseen negative consequences on our island's businesses. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gale. Ms. Marquez.
Hafedeh, good morning, Senators. My name is Monica Marquez. I've been a resident of Guam for about four years. I'm here in support of Bill 6-37 to emphasize the current unreliable forms of testing that which usually ultimately lead to discriminating a person's personal medical decision. So I believe that this bill is a part of the acceptance process of the legalization of cannabis, plant-based medicine. These drugs are unable to give you a level of concentration or even a timeframe of when the person last consumed, or even how much they consumed. Cannabinoids like THC can stay in your system from about a day to a few months. With that, those desired effects can last from three to 10 hours roughly, which is enough for an effective good night's sleep. So in all actuality, with me, I'm more of a CBD user. I use the whole plant, not just THC. So when someone with extreme anxiety like myself, I strive off of a full-spectrum oil, which uses all the plant. This product was made federally legal and protected by the 2018 Farm Bill. This particular oil, this full-spectrum oil that's on shelves now, still, people can run the risk of testing positive because of that 0.3%. So even though that 0.3% is adjusted, it's not used for any intoxicating effects, more so for the additional calming effects that happens with the entourage effect. Pretty much, the entourage effect means teamwork makes the dream really work. So studies have shown that just using a CBD isolate, which is 99% pure CBD, and a broad-spectrum oil, which is the detected amounts of THC have been removed, that little 0.3% makes that difference with somebody that has anxiety, muscle spasms. It's anti-inflammatory, also antioxidant. So instead of being highly influenced and exposed to alcohol and nicotine, tobacco, during most family gatherings or gatherings in general, those can closely be connected to causes of death and sickness in the world. So to end the pre-employment can offer an alternative to the public to seek more knowledge on this plant, as well as give an opportunity to try this organic form of relief and engage with like-minded community more openly and unafraid. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marquez. Mr. Herrera.
Buenos, good morning. Morning, Senators. Vice Speaker, good morning. Thank you for having us. My name is Vincent Herrera. I'm here in favor of Bill 6-37. I know it's very easy for most of us to see the title of the bill and think, oh, people are going to start smoking at work, or, you know, utilizing cannabis when they're not supposed to. There are many out there on island currently working who do not use any cannabis products, especially topical products like oils, lotions like that, and creams, because they are in fear that they might test positive for THC, and they're currently employed. We have a lot of older manuqo and older citizens in the workplace, and also a lot of veterans here on island that are in the workplace that have many aches, pains, have hard times sleeping, and they continue to suffer when there are products out there that can help them, but they continue to suffer because they are worried they might lose their job. They, you know, they suffer for years in pain and lack of sleep. I believe most of us here can agree that we also have aches and pains and hard times sleeping sometimes. That doesn't make us, that makes us less productive in the workplace. If 6-37 was to pass and that fear of testing positive by utilizing these products was to be removed, many will start to get better sleep, for those who utilize, you know, these products, they get better sleeps, experience less aches and pains, and by doing that, we get a more motivated and productive worker. And that overall gives us a stronger workforce, which I believe is what we're all hoping for. If I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, right? We want a stronger workforce, a more motivated workforce. We want those who are older, who are still working, like I mentioned, to be able to get good rest and not be suffering as much so that they can provide for their family. So not only is it, will this benefit the local community, but it will also benefit the workforce in general and our overall economy. So please ask that you guys take that into consideration. Thank you for having us.
Señorita Massey, Mr. Herrera, before I yield to the author of the legislation, I want to note that this bill was referred also to BBMR, Bureau of Budget and Management Office. They noted that this new article would be better suited under the purview of the Department of Administration, thus the referral of this bill. One, BBMR also noted that there's no, and there's no anticipated fiscal impact on the drug testing program. And currently, the committee also found that there have been a couple of states that do ban pre-employment cannabis testing, and we found that to be in Nevada and New York. I will yield to Senator Parkinson for a question to the panel or a comment.
I would just like to ask, ma'am, as Madam Chair has pointed out, New York and Nevada has banned pre-employment testing. How has liability functioned in those states and has the worst fears that you've proffered come to pass in New York and Nevada?
Sure. As you know, this is very new territory, and what you're referring to is also very new has passed. So it's, it's hard to, or it hasn't been enough time to see, but I can also say that it's only passed in those areas. There's many other areas that are considering it, including Colorado, but they've stepped back now to truly understand the implications. And in fact, when you look at the Colorado and what their legislature is going through, their senators are saying they need to step back and understand exactly how it is going to affect their businesses. So I can't speak directly to New York and Nevada at this point because it's such new legislation, as I think you're aware. But I do point to other areas that were on that path of New York and Nevada, and now they've stepped back to just understand what the implications are.
Okay. And so just to be clear for the record, so you're saying that as far as your understanding, there have been no adverse effects in New York and Nevada from banning pre-employment testing?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that they haven't had any opportunity to see what the effect is. I think you know that's what I'm saying. Because, and the other thing is, something, and that's what I also addressed in what I was speaking about, is because of, this is such new territory, looking at how our markets operate, and we do have supply and demand, because it's so new that people are now taking cannabis on a little bit more frequent basis, it's starting to have some impact in our working environment. So yes, we have had some uptick, a little uptick, not that dramatic, though. I'll have to say, it has not been dramatic in terms of the number of individuals that have been applying and testing positive. Yes, an increase, but not even in the double digits. We're under 10% in this uptick. And world, and across the United States even, like Quest Laboratories just put out their analysis of this, and they're showing a minuscule uptick. Yes, there is an uptick, but again, there is not even, they're not even showing across, excuse me, across the United States based on testing that they do for companies. Quest is a very large drug testing company. Less than 5% increase going all the way back. I think their original, they were comparing 2012 to 2020. So we're seeing it, but it's affecting a very small portion of the workforce, and it's in some particular industries that it is affecting. But what I wanted to go back to is that supply and demand, employers that feel and have, can, because of the type of work they're doing, maybe there's not a federal constraint, or maybe there's not a safety constraint, maybe we're talking retail or something, those that feel they can adjust their policies are already starting to do so. And I share that from personal experience with my organization. I have companies calling, call me, again, not a ton, there's a few, that are saying, you know, we have these old drug policies in place, we're thinking about, in the current, you know, change in society, can we work to somehow change those? Is it legal? I said, yes, you know, nobody's, unless you have a federal requirement or there's some like DOT requirement, it's up to a company if they want to drug test. And so now they're stepping back, and they're reviewing on their own. And that's part of a healthy, free-market society, to allow that adjustment without necessarily, on the government side, having to jump in with, you know, regulation that I'm quite concerned about, and the business community, just where it could go to in terms of affecting the effectiveness of their business, particularly around the insurance policies, what that might affect, and what additional cost that is going to cost for a business, and particularly those that are dealing with potential safety, those areas too. And it's a question of, you know, stepping in, understanding individuals' rights because this is legalized. And one other area I did want to touch on, just for clarification, is that businesses, when they do drug testing and as a standard drug testing policy, have exceptions for bona fide medical conditions already. That's been longstanding, you know, since drug testing became a thing, which was really about in the mid-1980s, drug testing came into a thing, and then of course, it was, you know, increased with the Reagan administration and the whole, the fight against drugs and tying drug testing to federal monies. We've had a, you know, large increase in drug testing. But all the way from the beginning, drug testing policies have always had exceptions for bona fide medical drug needs. So anybody who is taking marijuana for a bona fide medical condition, as they go through drug testing processes, if they have that documented, it's taken into account. If there's no other evidence of behavior or paraphernalia or anything on the worksite, and somebody tests positive and they have the bona fide, that goes into the whole drug testing process, so.
Thank you.
And separate from that, I mean, I've had this here and also cases, I used to sit with others reviewing that, so I just wanted to clarify that. That's already a component of drug testing and policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Gale. Senator Sinagastin, a question or a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, in reference to the cannabis, I supported the cannabis. When Senator Clinton was here, he asked me to support it, I supported the cannabis, the legalization of cannabis. I support the medicinal cannabis. The two of, the two of you mentioned in reference to medicinal. If it's medicinal, I have no problem. But if you're taking medicinal marijuana and you're trying to apply for a job, normally most of those people are not going to apply for a job, they're going to be applying for social security, all the other benefits that are available. And if someone was to tell you, you're having problems sleeping, go see a doctor, so they can prescribe you marijuana, then it's allowed. It's exactly what Ms. Gale mentioned. If it's medicinal, there's a difference. But to generally say... But to generally say, unless, no employer, no landlord, college, if you want a job, don't smoke, don't take it. If it takes 30 to 90 days for it to clear in your system, like you've mentioned, then wait nine, 90 days, pass the test, get employed. You may, that individual may find out they don't need the marijuana anymore. It may be a phase in their life. I have nothing against marijuana, I, go for it. You can plan six, you can sell it, you can smoke it, you just can't sell it. So as far as for employment purpose, I, I couldn't support that because the government has zero tolerance. The federal government, zero tolerance. If, and, and if any private industry out here is, is allowing it, go for it. That's your, that's your business. I don't, I don't believe the government should get involved to tell you as a private, a private owner of a business, that you don't have to test for marijuana. If you, if you want to, test, because you can ask the lab to make sure they don't test that part. They don't just say, I'm going to test for everything. No, they can separate it. They can exclude cannabis if they want. But with enough drugs that are floating on Guam today, and we fund it in the budget, that there'll be drug testing, if it's for employment, if you want a job, don't smoke. Get your job first, then you can, if you, if you can afford your habit, then so be it. But this is all about employment. I will start first, don't smoke, get your job, get settled, move on in life. If you want to smoke, smoke on your own leisure, because you're not, then, then you're not tested unless you're random, unless you're in a special group. If you're in law enforcement, medical, I mean, in the medical field, or you're a teacher, I would hope you get tested, because I, I would just hate to see a police officer or fireman responding to save lives, stone, you know, under the influence. Or you're in the hospital, and the nurse or doctor walks in and he goes, hey, brother, stone, wrong answer. Or a teacher, you know, and I don't want to make a joke of it, but if it's employment, if you want to get a job, wait until you get your job. It's easy to pick it up and light it up, it's easy to put it down and don't light it up today. You can wait. And I've spoken to many folks about that, and I know a lot of people that do smoke. Yes, sir.
Senator, are you saying then, don't smoke till you get the job?
Mr. Herrera.
And then smoke after?
Go ahead and address the.
You address, you address, and then I'll answer.
I'll, I'll go ahead and yield to you, Mr. Herrera.
Thank you. Just a quick question then, just to clarify his message. Is he saying, don't smoke so we can get the job, but then smoke after?
It was a figure of speech.
No, no, it was, it was basically saying.
Because that's where you stopped your statement, and I just want to clarify if that's.
No, no, that was a figure of speech, because number one, the bill is about getting employment. Don't smoke. If you need a job, get a job. Now, if you choose to decide to smoke after that, that's on you, I won't know that. I'm not endorsing that you smoke. It's not a habit. I really supported the bill to legalize marijuana. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastin.
Thank you.
To my colleagues and to the listening audience here, I want to note for the record that Department of Administration, who is part of the impacted group for this legislation, was invited to this meeting, to this public hearing today. Apparently, their schedules conflict, but I will ask for their testimony as a follow-up to the committee report. At this time, I will address Senator Fisher for a question or a comment.
How about both? Do I have to choose a question or a comment?
No, sir, I'm opening to one round, as noted in the rules of engagement, because of the time and how many more bills we have to hear, it's your choice.
Okay, well, I'm going to try and get away with it anyway. Here's, as, as, as the comment begins, I'd like to, I'd want, I'd like to join Senator Joe over there for the nice dosage of common sense. I agree with everything he said there. Now, as to the bill itself, the state of the law, Madam Chair, right now, is that pre-employment testing is constitutional, there's not a problem with it. Employment testing, while you have the job, it has to be based on, I think, let me pull the phrase up, a reasonable objective basis, not behavior, as this law says in subsection B. So I would just like to say that I would hope that we would amend this bill to change the word behavior to a reasonable objective basis. That's pretty much the standard of the law.
Duly noted, Senator Fisher.
Thank you, thank you very much. And this is just going to expand a little bit on what Senator Joe was saying. The way this bill is written, school bus drivers do not have to be tested prior to employment, police officers do not have to be tested prior to employment, firemen do not have to be tested prior to employment, Department of Corrections officers do not have to be tested prior to employment, and the parade of evils just goes on and on and on. I have to agree, I think the Employers Council, and I, I agree with their position that this is, you know, especially for the private employers in, as a comment, I'm going to, I'm going to rely on their ability to run their own businesses, and if they choose to believe that an individual who shows up and is testing positive for marijuana represents a, is an implement to the way they want to execute their business, that is their right, and their, their right to do so is entirely legal and entirely constitutional. Because of the danger this presents to the community, I cannot support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. Senator Tiedegui for a comment or a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too, like Senator Sinagastin, voted in favor in the 35th Guam Legislature. I've had family members who dealt with cancer, and I lost a sister to it, who, right when they were signing the bill to legalize it, passed away that day. And, but I had, she had the opportunity to know that finally something like this was passed. I've seen many friends who succumbed to alcohol, who've actually gotten a car and driven and killed other people because of alcohol. And if you've smoked marijuana, you know that when you're in a car, you're driving 35 miles an hour because you actually think you're driving 60. So it's, it's a little bit, it's a little bit different and less evasive to the body, you know, smoking. But most of all, I supported it because of the medicinal side of it. Doctors would not prescribe because they were afraid to lose their license. So by legalizing it, making it recreational, then there was no doubt, then a doctor can actually say, this is an option, just like they tell you, take apple cider vinegar if you're having stomach issues or, you know, et cetera. Well, if you smoke or even take edibles or anything like that to help you sleep, help with anxiety, then it's something that's prescribed by the doctor, and I don't see why that, that prescription, that recommendation be submitted to your employer. But one of the things I don't appreciate is this body, you know, to start dictating on people's businesses, telling them what to do and how to do it. They're not the ones taking the risk, spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on opening a business and sometime not get paid because their employees come first. But when it comes to the government of Guam, that's different. We're providing services to the people of Guam, and that we have to be more strict about. And sure enough, police officers to bus drivers that Senator Fisher mentioned, was my biggest concern also in this bill, as I read it, that they would be exempt. They shouldn't be exempt at all. But if you think about it, the government receives much federal funding, a lot of federal funding. So there is still a requirement, even though we have 18 states that have already passed law, you know, and, and more coming up with legalizing marijuana, they're still very, it's still in incubator type of scenario when it comes to Nevada and, and New York. We, we really don't know those laws clearly. I think we need more time to review it, to make sure that those people who are getting a job, well, one, I don't support the bill because you're infringing on private businesses. I don't support that. I do support some type of regulation in the government of Guam to allow people who use THC to help them with their issues, you know, creams, oils, these are natural products. But if you have some kind of doctor's recommendation to assist you through your ailment, by all means, the natural process is much better than the chemical one. I, I hope, you know, Ms. Gill, that you can actually look at those laws in, in Nevada and New York. I know you haven't, it was mentioned earlier, to, you know, give a consensus on that and, and review that, see what they're doing, because like I said, it's in the early stages right now. I think we might want to wait a little bit on this legislation and see what other states are doing right now. But there is a huge concern, more there is than a push for this bill. So I, I too have reservations about it, and, but I'm not going to stop because I do support the use of marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tiedegui. Senator Brown, on a comment or question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know what to say with regards to this, but I guess I'm going to put my thoughts together, because, you know, I realize there's some benefits that can be derived from the use of mari, I'm not a marijuana user, I can't say I've never consumed, smoked, or, but I'm not a heavy drinker either, so I don't look for other forms of chemicals to alter my state of mind so I can function. Might need to at some point, I don't know, it's not my choice. I do want people to be engaged. If you're running an operation, you have employees, you have liabilities, legal liabilities with regards to their performance, I certainly, as an employer, would want to make sure that my people are capable, competent, and focused, especially if the legal liability becomes mine if they harm themselves or harm someone else. I am not for the idea that we, you know, life is challenging enough, and yes, I mean, I can understand the medical side, but marijuana, at least looking at some of the studies, and I've been up here reading up on it, there are adverse effects as well. I mean, they say that it can impact the development of young people. If a mother is pregnant and can, and is smoking or consuming marijuana, it might affect the development of that child, and when they're born, they might have cognitive issues. So everything is not perfect, because we say it's natural, therefore, it's, you know, we have no issues. It, it resolves these issues, maybe it does reduce anxiety. I have anxiety all the time. That's why I don't drink. If I did, I'd probably be drunk all the time. That's life. But there's also adverse effects to it. I've had to deal with bus drivers that are driving our children that are on drugs, because we end up having an incident, because we end up having an accident with a bus driver that has your children, grandchildren on a bus. And I don't know if you're comfortable with that. I'm not. And I do expect public servants, when they do show up to work, to, to not be on drugs that are not prescribed. And in some cases, if they are prescribed and they impact your ability to perform your job, it might remove you from that ability to do your job, especially if you're operating heavy equipment or driving buses, for example, that could impact your ability to be conscious of the work that you're doing. So I, I am aware of those other issues. I don't think that this should be used as a reason for people to be employed, because I think you need to be responsible. If you want to get a job to work in this community or in this government, I think you need to be responsible, and you need to be able to be there to perform that job. And that includes those that show up, and I've had to deal with employees, because I've had some major operations in this government that I've overseen of employees that come to work who are intoxicated, whose level of alcohol in their system exceeds the legal limit. And I'm going to put that person behind a crane or operating a tractor or driving a bus or driving a backhoe where they're potential liability to themselves or they can harm others? So there are limits, just because we, we have said, oh, you know, marijuana is okay, everybody can be on marijuana, no problem, hey, let's not test for it. I, I'm not of that mentality, because there are other real consequences to that, and that also goes for prescribed medication. Even if you aren't prescribed medication by your doctor that has a chemical impact, you need to notify your employer, especially if you are in a position or a designated position where you're operating equipment. I had a tractor driver that fell asleep on a track when the crane was moving because of prescribed medication, that he didn't notify his supervisor that he was taking, a liability to himself and a liability to others. So I don't support this legislation. I do support drug tests, particularly of designated positions, and there are reasons why designated positions have been identified, particularly in the government of Guam. And I support the continued ability to do that. I think you need to be competent and capable showing up. And yes, we all have issues, we all have health issues, and we all have ailments, that, that perhaps we are looking at alternate means of treating them. But if it's something that affects your ability to perform, and this, we grew up in the generation, yeah, you're stone, man, that guy's stone, look at him, he's got red eyes. Well, it has an effect on your body. If you, if it didn't, why would we be taking it? And yes, it's wonderful, it's positive if you can balance it, but it can, you know, it can remove anxiety, but it also can create anxiety. You know, everybody's makeup physically is different. What impact one, you know, marijuana may have on one person may be different, may have an adverse effect on them. So I don't like to think that every, I wish it was, I wish there was some miraculous pill we could all take to be all wonderful, healthy, and happy with the world. I haven't found it yet. So I think we need to be responsible. Sorry, I'm of that generation. We need to be responsible in terms of our performance when we work, especially if this removes, as Senator Fisher had mentioned, designated positions. And I, I don't tolerate bus drivers, I'm sorry, automatic termination, because if you are a liability to others, particularly children, I have a problem with that. So I do not support this legislation. I understand the medical aspect of it. I think the legislature, I wasn't there when this happened, kind of sidestepped the issue of not wanting to deal with all the complications of authorizing medical marijuana. They just simply said, and they actually asked the people at Guam, do you support medical marijuana? People said, sure. They didn't ask that question when they said, oh, let's just legalize it altogether. They just went ahead and did it because they didn't want to deal with the complicated issue of authorizing medical marijuana. And here we are. I'm sorry, with all the drug issues that we are dealing with now, even among our children in the schools, that we have to look at authorizing, you know, other forms of, of medication to issue so that we can ensure our people are not dying of overdoses in our schools, look at the incident just happened a few days ago, and that was indirectly related to fentanyl, but let's go on and deal with the realities that we're facing. I, I'm not here to endorse this when we see these adverse, especially now, when we have so many drug issues that are affecting our community in a very adverse way. I think we need to be a little more responsible for our leadership than, other than thinking, oh, let's just go have a party, when these really real issues are adverse, including our elderly that are being beaten in their homes, so people can steal from them because of our growing drug problem on Guam. And that I'm angry with. So I'm sorry, I, I will not be supporting this legislation. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. And before I have Senator Parkinson close on the measure, I will just note into the committee report that there has been legislation introduced in Congress to reschedule marijuana from Schedule I to Schedule III. Also, that introduction was done by Representative Greg Stube, from Republican from Florida, and also the Biden administration has sent information that they are to, also looking into the matter. So legislations like this have been introduced around, and I just wanted to make sure that that gets appended into the record with the documentation supporting that, so it's online if anybody wants to look at it. Senator Parkinson, I will give you the opportunity to do your closing statement before we close this bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, I would just like to note that federally required testing positions like bus driver, which is required by the Federal Department of Transportation, are not covered by this exemption, so the children will be fine. Testing for cannabis, only test for whether you have used cannabis in the last 28 days, not if you smoke on the job. If such a test were to exist, I would actually support that. The bill as written permits testing unless required by federal law. So all these concerns about federal testing are addressed in the bill. The inaccurate, I, I understand the need for safety testing, but the lack of an inaccurate test to test whether I smoked this morning or whether I smoked a month ago on my vacation, how does that really solve the, the problem of safety? In terms of liability, I kind of take your point. There are some situations, and that's why we made this law as broad as possible, so that we could take your public input and, you know, make it so that this law is more kosher with the community. So in terms So in terms of the Employers Council of Guam, I would like to work with your organization in terms of what kind of changes and amendments we need to make, in terms of making this more copacetic in terms of liability, because I do take your, I do take, I do understand the problem with liability as it relates to testing, because the liability testing has the same problem. Somebody gets into a car accident, all they're going to see is they tested positive. So I take your point there. And I just wanted to say, somebody had mentioned something about, you know, if you're a medicinal patient, you are able to get work. And I want to tell you, as somebody who has been a card-carrying medicinal member, that is not true. As a medicinal patient, it is extremely difficult to find employment. I, as, you know, just as a quick summation of my resume, I have been a 10-year employee of the Department of Agriculture federally, and I ran a small business here for 10 years. But despite all that, if I wanted to work for the government to help my community, I couldn't. The earliest possible position I could get that didn't drug test me was to become a senator. And so that does not strike me as right, that people who, you know, want to do good for their community, want to be gainfully employed, they can't be. And so that's why I'm up here going to bat for the medicinal community, for the recreational community, because sometimes government has to step in to protect the rights of the individual. And this is what I am protecting. I am protecting employees' rights and removing barriers to work, and we will continue to fight for this. And I'd like to thank everybody for the testimony, pro and opposed, because you have given me a lot to think about, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Senator. I will note for the record that Director Paula Blas is here from the Guam Retirement, and she does have efforts to support the efforts. If you'd like to speak on this measure, I will allow this, oh, oh, that's 27, I do apologize on the next measure. I will say, colleagues, that Bill Number 6-37 has been publicly heard. If anyone else wishes to present testimony, written testimony, they can do so by sending it to Senator Munia Barnes at GuamLegislature.org or at the Protocol Office of the Guam Legislature at 163 Chalantanto Papa Hagatna, Guam 96910. So thank you very much, Senator Parkinson, for the legislation. We will move on to the agenda. Bill Number 27-37COR, which is an act to add a new subsection to Section 8501, Article 5, Chapter 8, Title 4, Guam Code Annotated, and to amend Section 8503C of Article 5, Chapter 8, Title 4, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the retirement of public safety and law enforcement officers who are members of the Defined Benefit 1.75 Retirement System. And as Director Bamba is up here, I will go ahead, I mean, Blas, sorry. Blas, I do apologize. I will do my opening sponsor statement, Prima, I truly apologize for that. Bill 27-37, colleagues, is a bill that seeks to correct the unintended consequences resulting from language contained in Public Law 36-130. The legislative intent provides more detail on what the unintended consequences are, with the two amendments making it clear which public safety and law enforcement positions are eligible for the changes to the DB 1.75 Plan. Let me point out that my staff have identified one class of positions, the Department of Corrections parole officers, that will be added to the proposed language in Section 2. Then this point, this may be the only amendment to the bill as introduced, and I just want to note that for the record. I will ask my colleagues to, for their support, and look forward to the passage of this legislation at the earliest opportunity. And here to testify on this bill is Director Paula Blas from the Guam Retirement Office. You may proceed. I do apologize, Prima.
No offense taken. Good morning, Madam Vice Speaker and members of this committee. My name is Paula Blas, and I am the Director of the Government of Guam Retirement Fund, and I am here to submit our position statement in support of Bill 27-37. Bill 27-37, if passed, would clarify the eligibility requirements for certain members of the Defined Benefit 1.75 Plan to retire at a lower age and with lower length of service requirements, yet receive full unreduced benefits. Public Law Number 36130 had amended Section 8503C of Title 4, Guam Code Annotated, to provide Defined Benefit 1.75 Plan members, who are public safety and law enforcement officers as defined in Chapter 51 of Title 17 and Chapter 55 of Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, with the opportunity to receive unreduced service retirement annuities. However, defining public safety and law enforcement officers by reference to these sections of the Guam Code Annotated resulted in the unintended consequence of inadvertently omitting eligibility for positions with shorter life expectancies, such as the firefighters with the Guam Airport Authority. Inadvertently expanding eligibility for positions without shorter life expectancies, such as all employees of the Office of the Attorney General, which is contrary to the oral and written testimony submitted in qualified support of Bill Number 346-36 by the Office of the Attorney General, which had reported that only its investigators as law enforcement officers be included for eligibility. The Board also supports Bill Number 2737 because it would delete the ambiguous definitions of public safety and law enforcement officers as employees whose eligibility is based not on a specified job position or classification, but upon designation by an agency head. To that extent, the Board supports the deletion of employees based solely on designation as a peace officer by their agency heads, such as in 17GCA 51101B, because membership in the Defined Benefit 1.75 Plan cannot be based on discretionary designation of a particular employee. Bill Number 2737 would add a definition of public safety and law enforcement officers to the Defined Benefit 1.75 Plan that is based on the definition of uniform personnel in the Defined Benefit Plan, 4GCA Subsection 8104P, but adds public safety and law enforcement officers with shorter life expectancies because of the work required in their job positions as contemplated in Public Law Number 36-130. Adding the definition into the statute that serves as the plan's document enables the Retirement Fund to administer the DB 1.75 Plan with more certainty and efficiency. The Board supports Bill 2737, assuming that the government of Guam will continue to meet its required contributions to the Retirement Fund. So in closing, for reasons stated in this position statement, the Board of Trustees of the Retirement Fund supports the enactment of Bill 27-37 to clarify the stated intent of Public Law Number 36-130.
Thank you, Director Paula. Colleagues and to the listening audience, I will note that BBMR has submitted their report back to the legislature that this bill is administrative in nature and has no fiscal impact, and I submit that to the record also. We received that through the Committee on Rules on February 16, 2023. At this time, I will yield to Senator Joseph Augustine for a comment or a question.
Simple, I will, maybe, I don't know if it's a question or a comment. Anyway, basically, your testimony is just to clarify it, and that's all, right?
That's correct.
Okay, then, I'm in full support of this, of this bill, anyway. I'm going to be in full support of the next bill, because it was that individual that made this bill happen. Thank you.
Sis, Julius Massey, Senator Sonagizin. Senator Parkinson, you are recognized.
Hafaday, I just wanted to say, you know, I supported the previous bill, and I will support this technical change, not a problem at all.
Thank you. Senator Fisher?
Yes, ma'am, I support this bill as well. I know that you two have received this letter from, excuse me, Dean Titegui?
Yes, I was going to note it for the record, too, Senator Fisher, thank you very much. And yes, that's why the amendments will be made.
Okay, he makes, he makes a good point. What he was asking for was that parole officers be included as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. Senator Titegui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Paula, compared to the bill that passed or the public law that's in place, what exactly is really changed here, other than the definition as additional people have been included in this?
Yes, when the, when Bill 346-36 was passed into law, there was a provision in there to include classification of positions under two different statutes or codes. But where it was placed and how it was placed actually kind of placed us in an ambiguous situation because we weren't sure if we were going to follow our definition of uniform personnel or if we were going to follow the definition of safety officers and law enforcement officers, public safety and law enforcement officers. So what we decided with our attorneys was, let's just make it clear and take the intent of what 36130 wanted to do, which was take those classification of positions and put them in this one definition.
Was there a reason why they were left out in the first place? Like, for instance, I know the Attorney General's office was here, not the attorney, I'm sorry, the firefighters. Yeah, was there any reason, is there like, and also, is, do you see an exodus happening real quick here because of giving all these individuals the opportunity to retire earlier? Is this going to cost the government retirement more money? You know, these are probably the, my biggest concerns, is how much more is this going to cost the government of Guam?
There are positions that were already part of the bill or the law. All we did was make sure that the ones that were included in our Defined Benefit statute, which was the firefighters of the airport, were not left out. I don't think that was an intent of Bill 36130, or Public Law 36130. I don't believe the intent was also to give the discretionary authority to a department head to name which positions could get unreduced benefits, and, because they come and go. And that could be arbitrary, and since the fund uses the classification of positions that are within the government of Guam, when we actually run our actuarial valuation for cost or what it's going to cost the government, then we prefer that it's explicit and specified which positions these are.
I understand, and, but the cost to the government on anything like this is going to, by now including and ensuring that certain individuals are on this, it's going to cost the government more?
When we, when we actually ran the actuarial valuation for Bill 34636, these positions were already part of that, in terms of uniform personnel. We tried to pull many of the positions that we thought fell in that category, that were not included under our definition, because it was something that I was hearing that was going to get added into the bill.
Okay, so it was previously, what number was that, that you provided when we had the, when we had the first original bill here in the 36? How much was that going to cost additional to the government?
Two hundred and some thousand dollars.
Only, right?
Something, you ever take, 0.04%.
Okay, okay, well, my other question was, do you see with something like this, you're going to see quite a few people exiting the government because of this?
I can't answer that right now, only because after the bill was passed, it wasn't a big uptick in the number of people that were anticipating on retiring within the next six months. I mean, you had some that met the 25 years, but just remember, they have to have 25 years in order to retire at the age of 55 for unreduced benefits, or they have to be 57 with a minimum of five years.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Paula, for your time, appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Titegui. Senator Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did want to ask, you mentioned with regards to government contributions, I'm hopeful we're current. Are we current, and how long have we been current? Because historically, one of the areas that get cut short very quickly when revenues are decreasing is retirement contributions. How are we doing there?
We are current. Yes, we are current, well, agencies are currently current with contributions coming in. We do have one agency that's trailing a little behind right now, but we anticipate getting that by this Friday.
Yeah, I hope we continue to do that, but, you know, if we go back, and the odds are fairly good at some point, especially at the rate we're growing the government and the cost of the government, when revenues start falling again and we decrease the amount of money coming in, because it's not, it wasn't uncommon, I mean, especially some of the major, be it the Guam Memorial Hospital, DOE, other, one of the first areas that try to make payroll, and one of the things that they cut short is the contributions to the Retirement Fund, which has put the Retirement Fund in some really not so comfortable position. So I think we just need to note that to be mindful, you know, that we continue to make our regular contributions, because it doesn't affect those that just hope to retire, but it affects all those of us that are already retired. And it's important to keep the fund healthy so you continue to do your investments.
I agree, Senator.
Okay, with that, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. Colleagues and listening audience, for the record, as noted by Senator Fisher, the testimony from Dean Titegui will be submitted, appended to the committee report. Sis, Julius Massey. So with that being said, on Bill Number 27-37COR has been publicly heard. Those wishing to send in written testimony may do so by sending it to Senator Munia Barnes at GuamLegislature.org or at the Protocol Office of the Guam Legislature, Illes Latur en Guahan, at 163 Chalantanto Papa Hagatna, Guam 96910. Director Blas, thank you so much for your time. Sis, Julius, and Vini DC. Thank you. Next on the agenda, colleagues, can you hear me? Next on the agenda, colleagues, is Bill Number 37-37COR, introduced by Senator William Parkinson, Senator Roy Canata, Senator Joseph Augustine, Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, Senator Blas Jr., Senator Chris Duane, Speaker Terlai, Senator Perez, Senator Titegui, Senator Saniklis, Senator Barnett, Senator Lahon, and Senator Brown, which is an act to name the Public Law 36-130, the Senator Jose Pito Terlai Retirement Act. At this time, anyone wishing, there is a number of family members and the spouse of the late Senator, our colleague Senator Pito, we want to extend our undangkulu na sis, Julius Massey, for being here this morning and supporting this effort. You have been listed, if your names are not listed in here, even if you don't want to speak, I'd like to note, please sign in so that we can append it to the committee report. If anybody would like to present oral testimony in support of, please, they're more than welcome to do so, and while you do that, come to the table, I will open to do so, and while you do that, come to the table, I will open the floor for the author of the legislation, Senator Parkinson, to please do your opening statement.
First off, I'd like to say thank you to the Terlahi family for coming out here today. It really, truly warms my heart to see how much love and support Senator Pito had, because in the last campaign, he was truly a mentor to me, let me use his space, and I will never forget his friendship to me. And so as an opening statement, I would want to read into the record the findings and intent of this bill. Senator Jose Pito Terlahi first introduced Bill 380-35 on July 14, 2020, relative to commissioning an actuarial study to determine the feasibility of allowing public safety personnel to retire in an earlier age owing to the physically and mentally taxing nature of the work. This had been long sought after by many public safety employees, who noted that most other jurisdictions in the United States offer a separate, lower retirement age for public safety personnel compared to other government employees. This also contributed to the attrition rate of public safety employees in the government of Guam, as they sought better pay and benefits in Hawaii or the mainland. While this did not pass in the 35th Guam Legislature, Senator Jose Pito Terlahi did not give up and introduced Bill 137-36 on May 6, 2021, for an identical purpose. The bill was incorporated into the Public Law 36-107, the Fiscal Year 2022 Budget Act, and made law. The actuarial study found a financially sound way to accomplish an earlier retirement age for uniformed personnel of the government of Guam, while also providing better retirement accruals for all government employees in the Defined Benefit 1.75 Plan. Senator Jose Pito Terlahi introduced Bill 346-36 on October 21, 2022, the culmination of years of work in determining a financially feasible solution to this long-running problem of benefit parity for our public safety employees with their off-island counterparts. The legislation was passed and signed into law as Public Law 36-130 on December 27, 2022, the last piece of legislation Senator Terlahi authored. He passed away just one month later, on January 30, 2023. This important piece of legislation, which Senator Terlahi fought so long and hard for, should be appropriately named after him. Thank you, I yield my time, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Parkinson, and at this time, I will open it to the panel. Mr. Terlahi, you may proceed, state your name for the record. Manana Sijus.
Manana Sijus, good morning, that was actually, that was my presentation, but, Sijus Massey. Good morning, Senators, thank you all for calling this public hearing and allowing me to testify. My name is Joey Terlahi, and I'm the oldest son of the late Honorable Senator Jose Pito Terlahi. We, the family of Senator Pito Terlahi, are here today because we are also very grateful for the recognition of Bill Number 37-37COR, an act to name Public Law 36-130, the Senator Jose Pito Terlahi Retirement Act. So my family and I are here because we support Bill Number 37-37COR. My dad would have been honored and sincerely grateful for this heartfelt gesture and the initiative of Bill 37-37. At this time, I would like to acknowledge all the hard-working government of Guam employees, most especially our first responders, and their families. My dad's devotion to helping improve the quality of life for the people of Guam encompasses his service as a public servant. His community service includes his role as the Director of Civil Defense, a Vietnam War veteran having served in the United States Army, as a First Sergeant, retiring after 20 years and being recognized with the Soldier of the Year Award. He served 18 years in the Guam Police Department, where he also led the Narcotics Division and graduated from the Drug Enforcement Administration's Academy. Additionally, he has a bachelor's degree in public administration and was elected Mayor of Zonia and served for 12 years, serving the people as the President of the Mayor's Council of Guam and the Association of the Mariana Island Mayors. He truly served Guam's people until his last breath, serving as a member of the 35th and 36th Guam Legislature. Bill 36-130 proves his unwavering commitment to building a better Guam for many generations. Therefore, Public Law 36-130 shall be known as the Senator Jose Pito Terlahi Retirement Act. Kumusina, hamzoo hisenadocenoya, dos minutus mas. Zabesturiyaldi hamzoo lobey finut samuru. Sejegui fana gwina sita tau if pa be finut samuru. Za utu nga na sita taua, a tanit papa za u se sente na ungan memet gutai spiritu nia sita tau. Hamzoo nimangai gi gwa na hulu undangkluna sijusmasi pa estin opetu ni ra. Hamzoo engoftungo sita tau. Pyod hamzoo nistaba gi 25, zani 26 Illes Lautura en Guanah. Ha gu Senator Joe Sonogstein, ha gasau zan sita tau pumulisma ha gu engoftungo sita tau. Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes, malajab e sahana u gwaizaha mas. Sa todi tempo na istataba sita tau gwini, ha gu u todi tempo na tetendi sita tau, todi tempo na jujuda. Senator Parkinson esina initiative sijusmasi na unhasu sita tau todi tempo. Sejegong Fisher utu nga ma distigi koti, utu nga na maoli ka na tau tau za utu nga na sempitodu, i todupun chogi pa itau tau, para imi naoli ki tau tau sijusmasi. Senator Joanne Brown, ha gasaua tungu disti dikiki zuk, disti ada Blas Administration, ana direktor sita tau otsu onius u hasua. Senator Titegwe, sijusmasi lokui para todu i ajudumu ga sita tau ana istaba gwini. Sijusmasi lokui todu. Sita tau inti nga sita tau mamis kura sonia. Maoli kura sonia, sinseru kura sonia. Za todi tempo sita tau ana istaba gwini gi Illes Lautura, todi tempo aspipen penyu para ojuda masita tau ta gwini gi tanota. Edzegui gai gi holumi na sonia, zani kura sonia. Ana istaba sita tau gi Philippines. Ana istaba sita tau gi Philippines. Mapus na sakkan, u ma li zani medekunya. Sinangonya ni medekunya na wahapu blemma masoda, za addit. Masoda gi gasta tau ni medekunya gi Philippines na wa blockage gi patasnya. Sinangonya ni medekunya na edzi blockage gi patasnya, piligu sempit di nefektai kura sonia. Sina sita tau asusedi stroke, patmo heart attack. Za sinangonya ni medekunya na debino ma atendi edzi poblema insigidas, pyod mu heart attack sita tau. Lo sita tau edzi naklasin tau tau, sita tau apepega todi tempo ipu malusha na tau tau kiniguiza. Hasangoni i medekunya po biru gi tati Guam, ti sina mapatsa ipatasnya. Pres talu ni medekunya asangonya talu sita tau lekna piligu put pumbiru tati Guam sitau ma regra sinedania. Sita tau talu asangoni ni medekunya ai, be hono be biru zuk tati Guam saguaha pa be chogi impu tanti. Ana istaba sina nao zan sita tau gi donya i kotonya gi hotel room. Sina nao asangonya sita tau, basta pido ma go guat, ekungo i medeku hafa isenangonya. Pres lekna sita tau, ungan u komprendia hafa todu i medeku, lo be biru zuk tati Guam za be na funa zan hafa upu meti i tau tau ta. I retirement bill. Sita tau asakre fisu todu, po na funa zan hafa upu meti i tau tau ta. The debita onra, da teraknisa todu bidonya sita tau. Sita tau, di posi February 3, po ali talu zani medekunya, za po ma chogi hafa nisi sita po ma chogi po manafa maoli, sita tau. February 1, estana listu hami todui familia, in book hami, in fan todui ticket hami, sa pa ben, ta tiji sita tau za be na sisti gi tati gi Philippines. January 30, adingwe sita tau. Dos dia saat tetenan, po ali zani medekunya, te fatinas, otsu hinanaonya sita tau. Otsu hinanaonya. Za estegui pa gu na matototzungu gi melan mi zuk za u gago gu hamzoo todu, hamzoo gwa na hulu, pun sopot ti esti, za pediamon lokui i tau tau i islam ma tungu historiana sita tau. Za lokui sia lokui ma komprendi za ma sopot ti esti na inano. Sijusmasi para tolu samta talu.
Undangkluna buen pubetsu, u agredesitodu. I'm lost for words, Joey. A man who truly had the heart and the soul for our people of Guam. I stand, I sit here before you to say that, when Senator Parkinson asked if I could co-sponsor this bill, I said, blindfolded, I would do this. A man who gave his heart, a man who gave his time, and a man who truly wanted this bill to be done for our frontliners. So I want to say thank you. Thank you to the family, thank you for his siblings who are here today, for truly recognizing the work that your loved one has done, not just for his beautiful village of Zonia, but for the people of Guam. Truly is a man who's come from grassroots, has worked his way, and continues to serve and protect our beautiful island that we have today. So, undangkluna sijusmasi. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to acknowledge the presence of our Legislative Secretary, Senator Shelton, thank you so much for coming for this portion of the public hearing. I will yield to you for any comment to the family at this time, thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Speaker. Thank you very much, Joey and family, for being here today. We're very honored to hear this bill after such a beautiful celebration of Uncle Pito's life just a few days ago, and I want to thank you all very much for being here to remind us of his good work and the service he gave to our island so selflessly for all the years of his life. You know, he is still my favorite, so I support this bill 100%, and I look forward to its passage and to celebrating that with all of you again.
Sijusmasi, Legislative Secretary. Senator Sonagustin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, Joey, like you mentioned, I've known your dad, I was in the police force in '77 with him. I remember when he went up to civil defense, I used to tease him for Monroe. Niketu na zase tamunu papa, you know, and that's Pito, that's Pito for you. I used to go up to Zona, go to the rants, you were lots smaller. And that's the place where you go, if you go to Zona and you're in the police department, go to the rants, don't even talk, don't even say where you're going to go, just go. And then that's how it was. And then we were together in the guard. He was the First Sergeant, now he's First Sergeant the other year. And it was ironic, because when he got in the legislature in the 35th, the other senators would ask, why do I tease Pito, because I can, you can. I work, I work for Pito. He was in narcotics and I was in intelligence. And I'll tell you what, for many of the law enforcement people out there that know Pito, they know the kind of person Pito is. He will buy you your drink or your dinner before you can even offer it. He will give you a ride home, even though you have your own car. You tell him, no, I'm going to take him, because he's just that kind of guy. And for many people in the military, they know him as that, even in the guard. Like I said, when he came in the legislature and he said, he's going to do, he's going to do a retirement bill, right, for the law enforcement, he said, get it done, and I'll back you, because I was the budget guy. And we followed through, we had meetings with retirement, I mean, I wish Paula was still here, because she would make a joke about it, says, tell me what you want, and he did. Told her, then we just kept pushing it, didn't get past 35, reintroduced 36, went through. Unfortunately, it's at the tail end, but I told him, I said, don't give up, we're going to get this passed, and it did. And you know, on the day it passed, that was very, anyone who mentioned me, knowing your dad, that's tough, that's a tough thing to think. I'll never forget your dad. Pito will always be in my mind, and may God bless him, and I'm in full support of this bill, and we're going to move on on this one. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome, Senator Sonogstein. Senator Parkinson, you are recognized.
Thank you for that truly beautiful testimony. One of the things my own father had told me when I had wanted to step into public service, that it was an incredibly thankless job, and that every day, people would tell you what you were doing wrong and how you weren't doing enough, and he asked me if I was sure if I wanted to be in this job, and I told him I was. And so it's with great admiration and respect, as I consider the career of Senator Jose Terlahi, and how much he gave to his community on such a thankless job. I couldn't imagine doing a job like this for a community I didn't love. And it's through that shared sacrifice that I know that Senator Terlahi truly loved this community, not just his village, but the whole island of Guam. And so I'm honored to introduce this legislation on his behalf, and thank you for his service. And you, his family, are his legacy, and knowing the man that he is, I know you will do him proud and all of us proud, so thank you.
Thank you, Senator Parkinson. Senator Fisher, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Joey, and thank you to the entire family. I've known your family for about 30 years now, and it's been an honor to know you all. I'm sorry that you are going through this very difficult time right now, and you are in everyone's thoughts. I regret that I won't, do not, and won't have the opportunity to serve with the late Senator Terlahi. He was a gentle and a good man, and I'm sorry you're going through this, and I'm in full support, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. Senator Titegwe, I'm going to recognize you at this time.
Sijusmasi, Madam Chair, and good afternoon to the Terlahi family. You know, none of us got jealous when Pito would say, my favorite senator, this is my favorite senator, and the reason why is because when he said it, you know he meant it, he really did, so it made you feel good, even though he told Joanne, that's the favorite, you know. I know he meant it for me, too, when he said that. And how I know this is, you know Flo, even before Pito and I came back in 2018, when we got elected, I used to hang, I don't know if you knew this, Joey, but we had our Tuesday nights at some of the clubs, The Crib was our favorite place, it was Pito, myself, Nick Francisco, Dave Santos. People didn't know, I hung out with the boys. And we used to look forward to our Tuesday nights, you know, this is before he became Senator, and everybody had to bring food, I know Flo, you made sure he had his food with him, like the tatitas and the calaguins, and so that's when I really got to know Pito, you know, on a personal level. And we did this for over a year, we'd go on Tuesday nights, and then we both decided to run in 2018. So it was pretty cool, you know, we were like, hey, now we're going to continue more than Tuesday nights, you know, hanging out. But one thing that he was very proud of was his family. He would always boast about his family, his children, his wife, Flo, thank you for keeping him in check. Thank you for keeping him in check. But he leaves behind a great legacy, and I know that you will, you'll do him right and keep his legacy, something we can all be proud of. So, I wish you the very best, and thank you again for loving him, we loved him too. Thank you.
Sijuzos masi, Senator Tadegui. Senator Brown, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's always difficult at moments like this, you know, it's heartfelt. I knew Pito for 34 years, and certainly you were much younger then. You know, we always refer to the days of tempu na de Blas, and it was a very magical time, especially to be young and in the administration and, and having the opportunity to work with your dad, and not knowing many years later, you know, that I would come back to the Legislature and he would be here and we'd get to work together again. He often talked about his time on the ranch, and I had hoped that when his term ended, that he would be able to go back and spend time there, because that seemed to be something he talked a lot about, gave him, you know, a sense of peace, starting the day that he enjoyed, he enjoyed being there, being with the land, and, you know, I appreciate you articulating about your dad and what he went through in the last month or so in Chamorro. I'm not a fluent speaker, but thank God, because of my Chamorro grandfather, I'm very coherent in the language, and it's benefited me so much more in my life. It's one thing your dad was very skilled at. How he could express it in English was one way, how he could articulate it in Chamorro was incredible. And there's some things in our language that when you say it, it has such, so much more meaning, that doesn't translate into English in the same way. You know, during his state funeral and they played his final message to us on the floor, none of us had any idea that in such a short time, he would not be with us. I think that was the most shocking. You know, we heard about your dad's passing was so unexpected, because I had hoped he would have his time to enjoy his life and spend more time with all of you and Flo with you. You know, to have lost your life partner, what a, what a void that creates. And of course, you have your family and your children and your grandchildren, there's all reminders of that, but I'm sure that there's a space in your heart that will never be filled again in this life. That's the hard part, you know, it's a hard part, and we deal, when we, we, we lose those we love so much. In time, the memories will give you a smile, and there'll be so many things that will remind you of the things that he's contributed to this community, and I think that's the best thing we can leave behind, aside from those we love and our family, is that we leave things better. And certainly, he's made his time in law enforcement, which has been such a large part of his career, being able to accomplish what he did during his final session in this legislature, will leave a lasting legacy. There'll be many that have yet to come up in law enforcement that may wonder, "Who's Jose Pito Terlahe?" And hopefully, they will learn more of who he was and what he did and what he contributed to, not just his village, we know he loved his village of Jonia, but what he's contributed back to our community, and that's something to be incredibly proud of. That legacy lives on, as it does in all of you. It's been an honor to work with him. I hate these feelings of loss, I think probably the last time I felt this was when Speaker Ampinko died, who I was very dearly, very dearly, very dearly close to. He was so much of my mentor in my life and in my time here in the Legislature, and even in the time that I'm back, even coming back, I thank him so much, because if it wasn't for some of his guidance, I don't think I'd be here now. So, thank you to your family, to all of you for being here, for sharing his, his last month, that we were not here together, to know what he went through and the decision that he made. We appreciate that, and we appreciate you all for being here to remember and acknowledge him, and as long as you always do that, he will always be here with us. And I don't think I'm ever going to drive through the village of Jonia, which I do most days, and not think of your dad, and think of him and his time on the ranch. So, thank you again, thank you for being here, and of course, you know, you have all our collective, wholehearted support with the passage of this bill, and thank you for sharing him with us. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Senator Brown, and sharing those same sentiments about the articulation of, of our good colleague, Senator Pito, who could articulate in Chamorro, not so passionately, so sincerely, with all his heart, that he gave so much. And Auntie Flo, I want to say, Uncle Pito and my husband Jecor, next-door neighbors at Veteran Cemetery, and they will be parting in heaven with our families, so, undangkluna sijuzos masi for sharing your husband with the people of Guam, not just with Jonia and Jonia rules, but literally with the whole island of Guam, because he truly had Guam in his heart, so. With that being said, I want to thank all of the family members for being here. I know your names are listed here in the effort of supporting this measure, we will try and get it expeditiously done for the next session cycle, as, as the one coming this, starting this Friday, has already been completed through the Committee on Rules. So, the commitment from this committee is that we'll have it on the next session agenda. And with that being said, colleagues and ladies and gentlemen, undangkluna sijuzos masi, todus hamzoo, if there's no one left to testify, the public hearing on bills number 6-37, COR, bill number 27-37, COR, bill number 37-37, COR, resolution number 31-37, COR, and resolution number 30-37, COR, have been duly heard, and I will call this public hearing now adjourned. It is 11:17 in the morning. Yeah, I also said resolution number 21-37. Undangkluna sijuzos masi, sijuzos mbini DC, hamzoo todus, signa masi hamzoo. Thank you. Thank you.